Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber and have a desire to speak to the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available for an entrance and presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time. Each person will be allowed three minutes speaking time. Our city clerk will now make a Zoom broadcasting announcement.
Thank you, Madam -- oh, sorry. Thank you, Madam.
Go ahead.
As of June 15th, the City of Gran Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of June 8th is open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N2920 issued by Governor Newsom, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website in Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID number 845-0534-6614, and enter password number 267254. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@granterras-ca.gov. The City of Gran Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Gran Terrace City Council for June 8th, 2021. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Mayor Protam Hasi is absent. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll have our invocation tonight offered by Arturo Sanchez from the Living Word Inland Empire Church. And immediately following that, our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Jeff Allen. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, guys, for inviting us. I'm a part of Living Word Church. My name is Pastor Art Sanchez. We come out from Living Word Inland Empire. As we have our heads, Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this beautiful presence that's in this place. Thank you for this gathering, oh God. Thank you for the city councilman, for this meeting that you put together. I pray you bless it like never before, oh God. Bless the mayor, bless the leadership, bless everybody that's coming together to build your community, Father God, to reach out to the community and do more. We pray right now in the name of Jesus, and we say, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. We have one special presentation tonight from Southern California Edison. Before I get to that, do we have any reordering additions of or removal of items from the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Staff would like to remove Section K of the agenda, item number three.
Okay. And that's a closed session item. Thank you. All right, now to the special presentation. Southern California Edison Wildfire Mitigation Update and 2020 Reliability Report. We have with us zooming in is Mark Cloud, Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Thanks so much for having us tonight. I also have with me Mr. Jim Harris. He is -- there he is. He is our district manager from the Redlands Service Center, which serves Gran Terrace and many of the cities surrounding Gran Terrace. So thanks so much for being here tonight, Mr. Harris. Appreciate it. I can see the slideshow is up, so I'm going to get started. This is going to be a refresh on some of these points, and some of the information's going to be there. We're going to go over the wildfire mitigation work that we're doing in Gran Terrace and beyond to make California less prone to wildfire in California -- I'm sorry, California less prone to wildfire, but we're also going to go over Gran Terrace's reliability report from 2020. So let's go on to the next slide.
Can I pause you there for one minute?
Yes, please. Sure thing.
I cannot hear Mr. Cloud very well, and I imagine people at home cannot hear him. I don't know if it's his microphone or if it's our system here. Is there something, an adjustment that we can make? Okay, go ahead and say something more.
Well, I was just going to say that we're --
That's better. Thank you.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so we're going to -- I'm not going to go over everything. This is -- part of this is kind of a receive and file. There's a lot of technical information in the back of this deck, so you can pour over it after this, or you can ask us questions either tonight or tomorrow, but some of this stuff we're going to go over, I'm going to skip through because we don't have a whole lot of time. So let's go on to -- let's get the first couple of slides. You know that it's a very bad wildfire season for California, right? And actually, this is a deck that actually -- I'm going to ask if we can show another deck, and perhaps the clerk can help me with this. I did send one other one that actually combined this deck with the wildfire or with your reliability report, and if that's able to be brought up, that'd be fantastic. There we go. Okay, thank you so much for that. Let's skip ahead one slide. This is an overview about Edison as a company. We've been around for over 130 years, and we serve millions and millions of folks throughout Southern California, one of the largest utilities in the United States, and we work really hard every day to keep your grid safe and reliable. Let's go on to the next slide. This is a graphic overview, a very simple overview of what the grid looks like from generation to when the power gets to your house or business. We're going to skip over this as well, but that's like, helps to go over how big our system is. We've got millions and millions of moving parts. So this slide deals with what we're doing to modernize the grid, right? The grid by a lot of people, especially in the industry, is considered one of the oldest machines in America, and that is in many ways true because some of the pieces are really old, some of the -- the parts that don't necessarily move are older than other parts, so for example, poles, wooden poles. They've been around for a long, long time, and we, along with every other utility in America frankly, is on this constant battle to replace old poles and infrastructure, replace it with new infrastructure. And so once some of these poles hit the end of their useful life, which in some cases can reach up to 75 or 80 years old, it's time for those poles to go, right? So you'll see later in this program where we're replacing some of those poles in Gran Terrace. And so that is what this slide is about. We're pouring a lot of money into modernizing the grid, and we're also, we're not just looking at physical assets on the ground, we're also looking at digital assets because, as we all know now, if you have information of any kind, resources, assets of any kind in the cloud, you are subject to cyber attacks, and we've been seeing a lot of that lately. We are a prime target of cyber criminals because we play such an important role in keeping California moving, right? Every single day and powered up. So we are taking this very, very seriously, and when we're talking about grid modernization, one of the things we're talking about is cybersecurity. Let's move on to the next slide, please. This is a brief overview of some of the things I've talked about before this council before. This is an update, some updated numbers on what we're doing to essentially fireproof the grid. As we know, wildfires are incredibly powerful, especially of late. There's a lot more of them. They're more damaging than ever before. We've got dry conditions now coming back. It's a very -- it could be a very critical wildfire year. So it's good news then that we've done a lot of this work already, but we've got a lot more to go. I'm going to point out a couple of things on this slide. One is, let's go to the third box on the left there. It says covered conductor. We've talked about this before council before, but this is basically where we wrap distribution lines in a synthetic material, a sheath, if you will, and we call that, once it's done, it's called covered conductor, so that when those lines either smack into something like the pole that it's on, let's say, or get hit by a palm front, which happens a lot here in Southern California, it drastically reduces the likelihood that those lines are going to do what leads to the fires that sometimes utilities cause, which is sparking. So when those conductors are covered in this material, it drastically reduces the chance that you'll see those sparks flying off of impacted lines. And the other piece that ties into that, and you'll notice it's on the top, the second right-hand side, the box on the second right-hand side there, deals with hazard tree mitigation. So in other words, this is working very closely with state agencies to remove trees, not just in forested areas, and we all know we've had a real interesting problem with the bark beetle and dried-out trees, et cetera. And so a lot of those trees have to come down and have been coming down, but we also working at the street level, we and our vegetation management teams have been working really, really closely with communities to remove vegetation around power lines in neighborhoods. And so that's been an important part of reducing the wildfire risk in California. The final piece there that's mentioned, I'm looking over at my other screen here to kind of look at that piece more closely because the slide on my screen's really small here, so forgive me for turning around, but you'll notice it says community crew vehicles. That's something that we've added relatively recently because we recognize how disruptive our public safety power shut-offs are, which is another critical piece of our wildfire mitigation plan. This is where we proactively de-energize a circuit if we think that circuit is at great danger for, great risk for contributing to a wildfire in our communities. And so what those, we deploy those vans and trucks to areas that are hit with PSPS outages, and I'll get into what those look like right after this. We deploy those vehicles, and they contain niceties like the ability to charge your devices, your laptops and phones, they have water, we have informational resources about what's going on with PSPS, and sometimes they contain lots of other goodies for folks who are being impacted. We recognize that this is not going to solve the ultimate consternation customers have with PSPS outages, but these do help, and we hope that they do help to alleviate some of the discomfort that you experience when you're going through a PSPS outage. I will say fortunately, folks in Gran Terrace more than likely will never experience a PSPS outage because of where you're located. You might experience other types of outages, but regarding these PSPS outages that are very targeted toward high-fire-risk areas, likely those won't come down to these more urban areas outside of like the foothills and mountains. That doesn't mean that Gran Terrace, of course, is out of the woods when it comes to fire risk. You're surrounded by Brush, Chaparral, and the Blue Mountain, et cetera. We take those areas very, very seriously, and we do believe that they are in a certain level of risk for wildfires. So we'll get into where some of that work is going on on a map in just a few. Let's go on to the next slide. This slide speaks to public safety power shut-offs, which I just described. Again, this is where we proactively de-energize a circuit, and this is, we don't do this lightly, and we do this only based on really sound information, thousands of data points coming in from weather stations across Southern California and from our in-house meteorologists and firefighting experts. We take this decision to de-energize very, very seriously and only do it as a measure of last resort when it seems like and appears as though a wildfire threat is really looming around a particular area. The good news is we're getting better at this protocol, which will over time reduce our need to rely on it in certain areas. And so we can talk about PSPS more in a little bit, but that is the overview of PSPS outages, and keep in mind, we're working very closely before, during, and after these outages, working with folks like city councils, mayors, our emergency operations services folks, working very closely with them, perhaps in some cases over-communicating. We've been told when these occurrences happen. So we take them very seriously. We're doing our best to communicate these instances when they happen, and we're doing our best to improve our system to actually reduce the need for this PSPS protocol over time, and I'll get into what that looks like. Next slide, please. Part of grid modernization ties in some of these elements here. We have something called our Pathway 2045. It's basically our plan for modernizing our grid as it relates to renewable energy and reducing carbon emissions in California. What that looks like in real terms is what you see on the screen here, these four key areas. We've got, we have been over time and will continue to steadily decarbonize our grid, which means we will increasingly rely on renewable energy resources rather than older fossil-fuel-based energy resources. You might say, well, that's great, and it's clean, but renewable energy is intermittent. When the sun's not shining, and the wind's not blowing, the power's not being generated, which is true. This is why we're also investing a lot in grid-scale battery storage, which is a very new technology. We're still in the nascent stage of battery storage technology, but we do think it's the future. So that when you, when the power goes out, there's an emergency, or the wind is dying away, and it's nighttime, and so the solar panels aren't generating electricity, we can deploy battery backup power at grid scale, which means we can power entire neighborhoods using this technology. Again, we're years away from being able to do that in a more meaningful way, but we are pouring lots of money and time and energy into developing that technology along with all of the industry partners, like Tesla, for example. Tesla's getting into this. In fact, they've essentially perfected the home battery storage system so that you can actually pair your own solar system at home with a battery that will actually power your home during an outage. The other thing that we're doing is electrifying transportation, which means we're going to make it easier, more readily available to power your electric vehicle, not just for personal commuters, but also for trucks and vans and medium-sized trucks and things like that, school buses, et cetera. We're also applying that same technology and thinking toward electrifying buildings, much like solar was needed to be incentivized 20 years ago to get the early adopters to actually invest in solar on their homes or businesses. That is kind of where we are right now with building electrification. It's the early days of this technology, and so we're certainly not fans of the state dictating what cities and folks should do when it comes to their energy use. We think that there should be choice, but for those who want to adopt this technology early because they see the value in reducing carbon emissions that are released from buildings through natural gas, we will be there to help them to actually make that happen, and we're working with cities to do things like develop reach codes for folks who want to do building electrification. All right, and that last piece there, it's tied into the previous one. We're removed, we still rely heavily on natural gas in our system. We in fact have a plant in San Bernardino called the Mountain View Generating Station, which is a natural gas plant, but over time, like cities are starting to do, we're looking at ways to reduce our reliance on natural gas plants. All right, so that's modernizing the grid when it comes to greenhouse gas emissions and cleaning the air, because of course we do have a serious air quality issue in the Inland Empire. Let's move on to the next slide, please. Now, that is the, that's the end of that piece, right? Now we can go on to the reliability part for Gran Terrace, but since we're here and have a little pause in the content, Mayor or anyone else, is there anything you'd like to talk about or ask questions about on anything that we've mentioned so far?
Thank you, Mr. Cloud. Are there questions or comments at this time? Nope, you did very well. Please continue.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And this is where Jim's going to be a big help because Jim's got his fingers and his eyes on the ground, and he knows exactly what's going on in Gran Terrace regarding circuits, transformers, reliability, et cetera. But let me set some of this up for him. So let's go on to the next slide, and this is going to cover, forgive me. This is what we think of when we think of reliability. It's basically how long are the outages in Gran Terrace? How long do they last? How frequent are they? And that, when I say reliability, I should be saying, when we're not being reliable, what does it look like? How long are the outages? How frequent are they? How many minutes are folks being interrupted in their power service? And you'll notice that we've added this to this slide, we didn't have it last year or the year before, but public safety power shut-offs, and the related wildfire mitigation work has impacted our reliability numbers for this year. But let's go on and take a look at the three key metrics we use for reviewing reliability in each city. I'm not going to go over everything, and this is jargon if you ever saw it, but we have these three key metrics that we call SADI, SAFI, and MAFI. The definitions are there, but it basically comes down to the total number of minutes every SCE customer was without power due to a sustained outage. We have the number of sustained customer outages experienced by SCE customers, and then in the MAFI category, the number of monetary, oh, sorry, momentary customer outages experienced by SCE customers. So those are the three key metrics we use for determining reliability in each of our cities, and we compare each city across the entire system as well, and you'll see that comparison soon. Let's go on to the next slide very quickly. You have five circuits in Gran Terrace. There they are. Your largest circuit is the Preston Circuit. You've got nearly 2,500 folks on that circuit. Your smallest circuit is the Global, I'm sorry, the Globe Mills Circuit. You can think of a circuit as a tiny, when you pull up in a calculator and you see the circuitry inside of a calculator, and you see all the moving parts and the miniature little devices and those lines that are going across that green board inside of devices, that's kind of what a circuit is. It's a very simple way of looking at a circuit. So your city is broken up into five of these types of circuits, and they are both integrated, they're all connected, but they also can act operationally separate from each other, right? So very high-level overview of what a circuit is and what circuits look like in Gran Terrace. In a little bit, I'm going to show you exactly where they are on your map, but let's go on to the next slide. This is where we look at actual reliability numbers for Gran Terrace. You'll see that we've gone up and down over the last few years. In 2017, my first reliability report for the City of Gran Terrace, you'll remember, I had to come and talk about why your numbers were so bad in 2017, and of course, you'll remember, we had a lightning strike that hit a substation feeding Gran Terrace. That was in large part what happened, which led to worse-than-usual reliability numbers. We got better in 2018 and 19, but you'll notice in 2020, the numbers have edged back up in terms of sustained number of outages and minutes of outages, right? So that's something we can address tonight, and Jim can help us understand how and why that happened. The blue bar is Gran Terrace, the red bar is how you compare to all SCE customers, okay? Really quickly, let's go on to the causes of some of these outages as we have tracked them. SADI outages, these are the outages that are, this is the cumulative amount of time the average customer is interrupted by a sustained outage each year, right? So so far, what we saw in 2020 is a large portion of those outages were caused by this category, weather, fire, and earthquake, which is pretty broad, right? You probably want to have some answers on that front. The other, a big piece there, 33, 30.3% came from equipment failure, right? Something else that we'll need to account for and address to you tonight, and Jim can help us understand what's going on with equipment in Gran Terrace. If you're so inclined to hear us tonight, we'd be happy to share that with you. Let's go on to the next slide real quick, and I know I'm breezing through this, but I don't want to take too much time. I want to give time for you to discuss these things with myself and Mr. Harris tonight because I'm sure you have questions. This last pie chart here focuses on SAFI, right? That SAFI metric, the number of times the average customer is interrupted by sustained outages each year, and again, equipment failure is playing a big role here for outages in Gran Terrace. So we're going to talk about Gran Terrace's equipment issues today, and very quickly, what I think we should do is, let's go on to the next slide. It'll give you, it'll show you where your circuits are on the map, right? So you'll notice these are where your circuits are on the Gran Terrace map, and they're color-coordinated to make it easy for you. The Cooley Circuit is that large green one in the center-north area of town, and so that's where your circuits are. So that's kind of important to know. Well, let's move on to this final slide in the presentation tonight that I'll be going over. This is where we start talking about where do we improve those equipment failures? Where is SCE investing in Gran Terrace's infrastructure? And this is a slide that tells you where that work is going, and you'll see in the key on the right, what, it'll tell you, it'll spell out for you what the work that is being done in Gran Terrace is and where that work's being done. Let's look specifically, just as an example, is yellow dots on the right, lower-right-hand side of the map. This is, of course, by the Blue Mountain area right here. Might be no surprise, we talked about earlier, covered conductor being deployed in high-fire-risk areas like hills, hillsides, and mountains. We're deploying a lot of covered conductor in that particular area in Gran Terrace because obviously we view that high-fire-risk area as being a place where there is potential for a threat, wildfire threat. So we're putting covered conductor in that area. And so that's where I'm going to stop, and I'm going to ask, actually ask Mr. Harris if he'd like to backfill what I just said on any of these parts and explain some of these things so that we, along with the city council, can understand what's going on with reliability this last year in Gran Terrace and where the work is going in terms of CIP projects and how that might improve the 2021 outlook when we come back again next year. Mr. Harris.
Welcome, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mark. A sound check, please. Can everybody hear me?
You sound great on my end.
Okay, very good. So we go ahead and we'll start back with the pie chart on Slide 13, and we'll talk about some of the causes of the outages. When we say other, other is when we have a circuit that relays, well, how our circuits operate is our circuits will relay one time, re-energize if there's still an element on the circuit, it'll relay to a lockout. Once it relays to a lockout, our troublemen have to go out there and patrol to look for where that trouble may be at. Typically, when you have an other, it's probably a vegetation issue, where vegetation's have either blown into the line, relayed to a lockout, and the circuit is patrolled and picked up segmentedly. So we segment that circuit out to the middle, check that there's nothing there, they open that switch, re-energize from the CV out to the center of the circuit, and patrol on that way. Typically, when they have other, that means we have no calls found on those. So what happened is the circuit relayed to lockout, we went out there and patrolled it, re-energized it by segments, and found no trouble out there, which typically is a tree or some type of vegetation that had relayed the line to a lockout and either blew itself into clear or fell into clear. Equipment failure, equipment failure is pretty explanatory, either transformer or conductor or underground cable has failed. Typically, when that's, when that happens, we have to go out there again and segment and pick up load through other means, through another circuit. We have circuit ties that are out there on all these circuits, and we'll pick up as much load as we can through those circuit ties, and what's remaining off is going to be off until the repairs are made. Typically, we have a inspection program on all of our underground circuits. They're inspected every three years to try and get a hit of some of this equipment that's going to fail. That's what we can do when we have transformers, switches, and that type of thing. Cable, we have another program that we go through and we do an intrusive look at our cable. That calls for isolating and doing really what we call a hypos test, which is where we'll put voltage through there to see how much voltage is leaking out or going to ground, which will be an indication of that cable in imminent failure, and that would be replaced. Weather is, again, that's pretty explanatory, whether it's wind or whether it's fire. I know we had, typically, our outages in Gran Terrace have been either third quarter, fourth quarter in 2020. That's when we have a windy season, that's when we have our heat. So those would also drive the outages, heat, wind, and those type of things, especially in our area. We, like everybody else, we were heavily impacted by the pandemic with our ability to answer the call in a lot of emergent or unplanned situations. We had to go to intact crews. Our intact crews were not allowed to work amongst any other crew. They had to remain with, the five guys that they were with had to remain together the entire pandemic. That's still in play now. We're going to get some relief on that around, right around June 15th, when we go back to our regular manning of our crews. But during those events, if a crew, if we had an event, whether it was in Gran Terrace or any other city that we maintain, we would have to go through a manual call-out list to try and manage to get all the members of that crew to report in. If we couldn't get those members, we had to go to our outside contractors. We have three outside-sourced contractors right now. outside contractors. We, we have three outside source contractors right now that are working on in, in our territory. That is Diversify, that is Asplint, and that is, our other one is City Light and Power, which is C L P. They are supporting us in the desert region on any emergent work or any planned work that, that we have going on in the, in the, in our territory. Again, we measure our reliability with no exclusions. There are times when you can have a major weather event, and you can remove those minutes of interruption from the, from the, from the, from your records, because it's allowed to do that if you, if, if that's how you measure reliability. We don't, we remove anything. We, we take ours with, with everything. So this measures the average of, of the customers in Grand Terrace that was, that were, that were off in, in 2020. Are, are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I've got Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Robles, and then Councilmember Allen.
There's one item here I don't see in the, in the possible equipment failure, and that is, before, let's say, 1980, a lot of your equipment was put in, or a lot of the lines were put in as what they called shake and bake, which was dig a trench, stick it, or band it together with some services, and dump it in the ground, put sand on it. What happens with the line loss on these 30-year-old underground lines that are not in conduit? I know you can replace stuff that's in conduit, but what are you doing about the stuff that's in, in the ground and subject to degradation in the ground and subject to heat?
Like you said, it is, it is coming toward, toward its lifespan. That was always a bad idea to do direct buried cable. What happens now is if there isn't it, an incident, that we lose either service or secondary because of, of direct buried cable. What we would do is do is install duct, and that would be for the secondary and the services of the affected line.
So what's the game plan for, because all of the, most of the service in your largest demand area is all shake and bake. So what's the game, what's your game plan for replacement on that?
And again, that, that, our game plan is when it, when, and again, when it goes to failure, unless we can get funds to go out there and proactively identify and replace, what we're doing is when that, when that service goes bad or when that, when we have a fault on that line, is we're replacing it at that time. We install one duct, and that duct goes to, again, the secondaries and all the services, and we're installing a piece at a time.
We had a serious downage about three, four years ago, and it, and it was at the, let's see, Preston and, that was that, it was that Preston Circuit, and it seems to me that there's a good chance that it was overtaxing the transformer and so on, because, you know, these are 30-year-old lines that are in the ground, and it would seem to me that there should be some kind of, rather than responding to a complaint or responding to a problem, wouldn't it be good if you had a game plan to be able to replace, you know, 2,500 units worth of wires in the ground? And especially in this case, you, you are right next to the California Water Resources line. So that's going to be a big game plan.
No, again, oh, and we would love to have something, well, I would love to have the funds available to go out there and identify and remove all direct buried cable. Again, that, I don't have those funds available. What, what we do have, though, is, again, like I said, every three years, we go over our underground system. Every year, our engineers, our field engineers are looking at our circuit loading. So with, with those mitigations in place, we, we want to be able to locate and identify a lot of this direct buried cable, and really that hypos that we talked about earlier, that is done really on that direct buried cable that's out there and, and on the Preston and on all those areas there. So we can try and identify that early, and it doesn't have to go to failure.
So what you're saying is one of the ways that you're at least trying to do preventative is that you're going down checking line loss and so on, on the lines the way they sit right now, and to see if they're
Absolutely.
underperforming?
Oh, we'll see if it's close to its, its life expectancy, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Robles?
I was curious if you know how old our line poles are in this city?
Not with any certainty, because there's so many. But like Mark says, they, they can average up to 80 years, depending on where they are and the condition that they're in. There's poles that have, they've probably never been touched except for the install, and that pole could have been there, put back there in, in, you know, when the city was established, or when service was established, whenever that could have been. But what we do with, with all of our poles is we have an overhead inspection, and they go through every grid, every year with a visual, and every two, every three years, they go through with an intrusive inspection to check the health of our poles. And again, any new construction, we're going through and we're doing extensive pole loading to make sure all the new poles that we install are, are up to the new standards that are, are out there for construction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for that great report. Now, my question, I don't know if it's, should be directed to you or to Mark, but I'll just ask, and then we'll go from there. But is it, regarding the area over the wildfire risk area that's over, the Bluff area that overlooks the San, Santa Ana River and all that, and Colton down below, that gets, is the inspection of that, and for, for that matter, the inspections in general, can drone usage be increased and helicopter usage be decreased in those areas because they're so close to the, to residential areas?
We, we have a, we have really started ramping up a drone program now to where we have, we have trained our T M's. We trained four of them out of the 12 in our region. We've trained four of them to have, they have the, all the F A A licensing to do drone patrols. So really, the, the time that we do a helicopter patrol is really when we can't get a drone up. Get drone right now for us or line of sight. If it, if it can't be a line of sight, then it has to be a helicopter. But we're working to get drone companies on that can do a patrol without lining the site.
Okay.
Councilman, if I?
Thank you. I'm sorry?
I was going to say, if I can add, Councilman, it took surprisingly a while for us to get F A A clearance to actually be able to deploy drones. You'd think that we could have done it sooner since we have our own helicopter pilots and we have a helicopter fleet, et cetera, but it took a lot of time and expertise before we could actually get the F A A clearance. So they're taking the drone use in this way very, very seriously, which they should. And so we finally got that F A A clearance. The other thing to note is, a lot of the helicopter activity, this is more of a reminder, a lot of the helicopter activity that you saw in the last two years were tied to two different projects. One was the wildfire mitigation work, where we had to go and inspect everything. So we did that work, and we'll likely come back and do it again over time, but we had to do a lot of that work in the beginning. So you saw a lot of helicopter activity in Grand Terrace around that time. It also happened to be at the same time, this is completely coincidental, we were pulling cable over the freeway to build out our West of Devers project, which is that large transmission line project bringing power from the Palm Springs area to the Inland Empire. I don't know if you saw the press release that I sent you all within the last few days, but we just completed that project, and that project is now done. So thankfully, West of Devers, you won't see any more of that precarious wire hanging anymore over the freeways, et cetera, although it was interesting to watch. The helicopter activity and all that stuff should be far more, it should go back to normal, what it was before wildfire mitigation work and before the West of Devers work. I hope that helps.
You bet, Mark. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much for the report. I, I have noticed that there have been a lot of outages, so I'm, I'm happy that your report actually looks like it is portraying the outages that we've had recently, and I look forward to you finding ways to mitigate those. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you, Mr. Harris, for being the one to have to address the outages.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
All right, guys.
Good night. Thank you. So we'll head back to our agenda. We are at the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items from the consent calendar at this time? All right, seeing no takers, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor McNevo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do we have items for public comment? Okay. So we'll open the public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. And because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to a statement made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff, or they may be brought back at a future date on the agenda. So we'll have public comment at this time from Don Smith. Mr. Smith, would you like to come to the lectern?
Is this thing on? Okay. My name is Don Smith, and I live at 12029 Mount Vernon Avenue in Grand Terrace, and I would like to discuss three particular problems relating to noise, decibels, public safety, whatever, and all. The first one is, my next door neighbor has been complaining to the city since before the pandemic about barking dogs and disturbing the peace, noise, decibels, and public safety. And he was advised by the city that what he should do is to go out and get a camera and photograph the offending dog, which is a good way to get shot. But anyway, he went out and did that, and then he brought the evidence to the city, and then, this is all before the pandemic, and then he was advised, because of decibel problem, to record the dog barking. And he did that. He went out and bought a recorder, and it's a good way to get shot, but he recorded the decibels, and I don't really know what that means. But anyway, he did all that, and the dog is still barking, and there's still no cooperation from the city. In fact, it might even be two dogs now. Where I live, there are seven residences, at least seven dogs and 17,000 cats. And the cats don't bark, but the dogs do, and they are disturbing the peace, and that's a good way to get shot also. So the second issue is one that's coming up, and it's been on the ballot five years ago, or whatever it, pardon me, it was. The, what I'm referring to is the sale in Grand Terrace of fireworks. And that's coming up, the Fourth of July is right around the corner, and people will be throwing their fireworks at houses and at dogs and cats and skunks and whatever we have around here. And this is a public safety matter, of course. It's also disturbing the peace. And if you, if you tie these things together, why, you know, they'll blow up a lot of, make a lot of noise. So I've only got 23 seconds left. I got to get to the, the last one real quickly. And that's public safety, really. Cars speeding up and down Barton Road, Mount Vernon Avenue, Canal Street, Michigan, you name it. And these are cars that are, they have windshields that are really, side windows that are really dark. Oh, hell.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The city manager is taking down your notes and, and
I'm sorry.
The city manager has been taking notes, and he will follow up. We do have your
My best one.
contact information. And if you would, when staff, when the city manager calls, if you would give him the name and, and contact information for your neighbor who you're talking about.
Uh huh.
But he will follow up with you, and he will hear the, the last item that you had.
And we can get the speed limit on Mount Vernon Avenue and the, the speed record on Mount Vernon Avenue?
Absolutely. He wants to hear all of that when he calls you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you taking the time to come down and, and tell us about these, though.
Thank you.
It really does help. Thank you so much. Are there any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll close public comments. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. And so we will move to item six on our new business, which is Historical and Cultural Activities Committee members. We have resignations and authorization to continue posting notice of vacancy. This is presented by Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. Perhaps it would be good if, if, if that conversation took place out in the lobby area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. For the record, Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. Before you this evening is a request to continue posting the notice of vacancy due to additional resignations from the Historical and Cultural Committee. As you know, the Historical and Cultural Activities Committee is a seven-member committee appointed by the mayor, subject to council approval, and they serve four-year terms at the pleasure of the city council. The following committee members submitted their resignations effective immediately on May 18th and 19th, which is Vice Chair Frances Carter, Committee Member Rochelle Rosenkild, Committee Member Martina Bonterin, Committee Member Lynn Smith, and Secretary Martha Montian. With these resignations of the members I've just stated, we will have, we have a total of seven vacancies, which is the entire committee. Now, during the time that the original two members, Ms. Pettah and Ms. Hoog, when they previously resigned, we had published the notice of vacancies. We currently do have two applications that we have received to serve on that committee from Ms. Frankie Byma and Ms. Renee Walker. We have also received additional applications at this time. However, we are required by the government code to publish those notice of vacancies for the five additional ones that we just received. So in order, we need to abide by the Maddy Act on that. So we'll continue advertising that. But as we get these additional applications in, we could bring this back to you on June 22nd, as we currently have six applications, and maybe at that time, have each member appoint their, select their appointee. So that is my staff report, and with that, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Are there questions at this time? All right, seeing no questions. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
I don't believe so.
All right, we'll close public comment. Bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and discussion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
I'll make the motion to move the city's staff's recommendation.
Okay. And so it's accepting the resignations and bringing it back to our next meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I'm second on acceptance of the resignations.
And bringing it back?
I'm not sure if I understand the bringing it back.
Well, we're not appointing anybody at this
All I see here.
Yeah. And, and so City Clerk actually added to it verbally, saying that they would bring it back to us on the 22nd for us to consider additional applications
Very well.
for the additional vacancies. So you -for the additional vacancies. So you're seconding Councilmember Allen's motion?
Yes.
All right.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes. The actual second part of the recommendation is to direct the city clerk to post the notices of vacancies for the five seats.
And that's, okay, and that's contained. So it's accepting the resignations, posting the notice, and bringing it back to us?
Correct.
So maker of the motion, that's what you intended, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Right, dude.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. May we have the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnevo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we will move to item seven, which is Amendment Number Eight to the Waste Disposal Agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the County of San Bernardino. Mr. G. Harold Duffy, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, before the council tonight is the Amendment Number Eight to the Waste Disposal Agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the County of San Bernardino. So in 1998, the City of Grand Terrace entered into a waste disposal agreement with San Bernardino County. In exchange for committing all of its waste to San Bernardino County landfills, cities receive the following benefits. They receive a discounted gate rate, which is what they pay at the gate. They also have a guaranteed capacity. So for, and this agreement also includes every city in the County of San Bernardino. And how this waste agreement works is all members of the, all cities have to sign on board for this. There's 16 of them that have to sign on board for the WDA, or there's no discount in the overall gate rate. So currently, this agreement will, amendment will extend the agreement to June 30th, 2026. It's a five-year extension. And it reduces the gate rate from $39.12 to $38 starting this year. In addition to that, just to let you know what that looks like is, so for non-WDA haulers that are not a part of this agreement, the gate rate is $54.94. And so we get the discounted rate, and besides that, we get an additional, and this agreement drops down to $38. So staff's recommendation is approve the resolution, adopt Amendment Number Eight to the WDA agreement between the County of San Bernardino and the City of Grand Terrace. So I'm available for any questions the council may have.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
On page seven, excuse me, on page 59 of your staff report, in the background, it states the council approved in 2016 to change the expiration term of WDA's to June 30th, 2021, allow for a reduction in WDA rate from $39.38 to $37 per ton. And now you're saying that this current proposal will be a reduction from $39.12 to $38.
So, yeah, Amendment Number-
It sounds like it's an increase to me.
No. Amendment Number Seven, when it was approved in 2016, it reduced the rate down to $37, but over time it's increased. And now in 2021, the rate is $39.12, and they'll take it back down to $38.
How did we get to $39.12?
So...
Because it was amended to 38 in 20, well, it doesn't, it doesn't say when it was amended to $39.12. So is it, just has an escalator in it?
Yes.
We start at the one, and it escalates up?
Right.
Okay, because I guess I don't remember seeing that in the, I didn't go through the whole proposal.
Yeah. So Amendment Number Seven, which was approved in 2016.
Okay. All right, that was my question. Any further questions? Councilmember Wilson?
Well, now I have a question. If we approved a dual-party agreement, and it was supposed to go to under $37 and some change, since when is there a built-in escalation agreement in that?
Well, as part of the contract, they do do an annual cost escalator, and they adjust the rate accordingly.
What an agreement.
And we are-
It's a pretty good deal, isn't it?
Yeah, if I could do that every time I wanted to. That's a terrible agreement.
Well, so the cost is actually based upon the operations. And so what they're trying to do, they're trying to guarantee the overall volume that comes in. But over a five-year period, you're going to see an escalator, see it creep up again. And so what's happening is they're now coming back to us and saying, extend the agreement, and they'll take it back down, not to where it was in 2016.
And they'll bang it back up again later, yeah.
Over time, inflation.
Sounds like Edison, and phone, and TV, and gas, and why not? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Further questions? All right, see none. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and further discussion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please call a vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnevo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item eight, which is the introduction of the FY 2021 to 2022 proposed budget. G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, and Terry Shea, Interim Finance Director.
Yes, Mayor, and Mr. Shea will actually start off the presentation. I'll be available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Shea.
Good evening. Can I get the clicker, Mr.? Good evening, Your Honorable Mayor, members of city council, city staff. I'd like to start out first by thanking the finance department staff, Christine Clayton and Brenda Angulo. They were a lot of help, and the city clerk as well, as well as Mr. Duffy. It was a group effort, me being new. So what we have before you is the proposed budget for fiscal year 2122. So our goals: ensure our fiscal solvency, maintain public safety, promote economic development, develop and implement successful partnerships, and engage in proactive communications. I'm a PowerPoint novice, so all this graphics is good. So what you have here is the general fund revenues. And so what we've given you is the 2019-20 adjusted budget, the 2019-20 actuals, which are from our audit report, which we just received, the adjusted 2021 budget, the 2021 year-end projections, and then the proposed, 2122 proposed budget. Our largest source of revenues are the property tax. This includes the new projection from HDL based on the successor agency going away, and property taxes being distributed normally. The $176,900 is from the, when the city repays the successor agency back, and then we get our share of that, the $800,000 loan. There are two sales of property in there, and Mr. Duffy could explain what those are if you have a question. Franchise fees this year, we're projecting they're going to be up to $620,000, so we budgeted $620,000. License fees and permits, there's a lot of activity planned for this next year, and we sat down with building and planning, and they indicated that these fees are going to go up. Sales tax, we received from HDL, which is our sales tax consultant, just some small grants, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, and then the wastewater receipts. So total revenues are going to be $8,654,269, but that includes the sale of the two properties for $1,798. Any questions on the revenues?
Thank you. Questions at this time? All right, no, please continue.
So here it looks like, in a pie chart, you can see our biggest revenues are the property taxes, followed this year, a little skewed by the proceeds, and then from the sale, the sales tax, and then the franchise fees. Those are our largest revenues, and it kind of gives you the percentage of our totals. So here are our general fund expenses. The same thing. We have the 1920 adjusted budget, then the 2019 actuals, the 2021 adjusted budget, what our year-end projections are. And so our 2019 actuals were less than the budget. Our 2021 projections are higher, are lower than the adjusted budget. And so our proposed expenditures are $6,805, and this includes salaries, benefits, professional services, and contracts. And included in the salaries are five new positions and two interns and one part-time. And then in the professional contracts, that includes things like law enforcement services, software, insurance, computer licensing, facilities, maintenance, and several items. And then transfers out to other funds of 105. So you can see our largest expenditure is professional contract services, followed by salaries and benefits. And included in the benefits number is the unfunded pension liability, which you are familiar with. So general funds, long-term performance, so we have gone up, and it's looking up to the healthy. And hopefully, at the end of this fiscal year 2122, we will remain up in the healthy section, which is revenues exceed expenditures, continue to show growth year over year, and the city maintains a two-month reserve or rainy day fund. So any questions on the expenditures?
Questions at this time? No, please continue.
And so our budget review schedule is tonight, you're getting a preliminary budget for your review. That's the budget introduction, and then budget deliberations on next Tuesday, and then budget adoption on June 20th, 20, 22nd, no matter how I read it. So that's probably my fault. So any questions on the timing of the budget?
No. Questions on the timing?
And you have a copy of the budget with you, so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Where would I find reference to the properties that are being sold?
In the budget transmittal letter. It'll indicate that the-
In this book here?
Yes, in the budget transmittal letter on page, top of page four. And it actually starts on page three. It reads, "Sale of property for development, 4.78 acres on Barton Road, and the sale of station number 23 to San Bernardino County Fire Agency."
So it starts on page three?
Yes.
Okay. And where is that in the actual budget? Is it just part of the number that is rolled up for us?
Actually-
So it is only, it's only shown in the narrative there?
No. Terry, why don't you-
Sure. If you look on page 24 of the budget, over in the far-right column, you can see proceeds from the sale of property, $1,798,700.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
So-
Mr. Duffy?
Might I just add too, Mayor, and we do note within the document that the sale of the property is treated as one-time revenue, and we don't anticipate spending any of that in this year's budget. It's up to the council once those sales go through, what they want to do with it. We project it to go to the rainy day fund or the fund balance.
And without the land sale, the general fund is positive to just a little bit short of $50,000. So if you subtract out the land sale, revenues are still over expenditures.
And that would be consistent with the city's policy of not using one-time dollars to fund ongoing costs.
Okay, very good. Do we have any further questions, or are we wanting to withhold that until the 20, or the 15th?
So, Mayor, our goal was to provide the council with the budget document, and then come back, give you a chance to look at it, and then come back on the 15th to start deliberations. But we're able to ask any questions, but I don't want to drop a book on you and then expect for you to do anything with it until you have a chance to read it.
Very good. All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll bring it back to council. They're asking for, at this time, receive the proposed budget and approve the schedule?
Does that require a motion, Mayor?
It does.
Okay.
Because we'd have to, we'd have to approve the meeting on the 15th.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll make the motion to approve that.
Mr. City Attorney?
Just want to let the council know that I have a conflict that evening, but Robert Q., Assistant City Attorney, will be here to cover that meeting.
All right. So I have a motion to review proposed budget and to begin, well, it says begin budget deliberations for proposed budget for fiscal year 2122 on June 15th. And so that's the motion made by Councilmember Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second by Councilmember Robles. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnevo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have no requests for future agenda items, so we'll go to city council communications, beginning with Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last meeting, I attended the Memorial Day Ceremony at the Freedom Wall over at Veterans Freedom Park. And I just want to say that I truly appreciate the very poignant words from Supervisor Raul, and also from Mayor Mcnevo, and when she shared the story of she and Jim's experience with veterans. So I want to also express my heartfelt thanks to all of the Freedom Wall Committee members that, year after year, just continue to do a tremendous job arranging and hosting this honorable event. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Nothing.
All right, thank you. So I will echo the thank yous from Councilmember Allen for the Memorial Day Ceremony. It was beautiful. It was nice to be back in person again, and it was very nice to be able to pay our respects to those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you to the committee for putting that ceremony together. I just have a couple of items to mention. At the OmniTrans Board Meeting, they talked about the zero emission buses that they have here, and they have a roadshow that they have planned. So they are kicking off the roadshow this week, and they want to showcase the new electric buses in all the cities that they serve. And so they are going to be contacting city staff, and perhaps they will come by either before our council meeting on the 15th or on the 22nd. They'll, they'll talk to you about arranging that. Be an opportunity for us to check out the new buses. They look pretty nice in the pictures. We can do a photo op. And so at SBCTA on June 2nd, the, we, this is budget cycle, so we're going through budgets, and we're dealing with renewing our insurance, which is very expensive, especially for cybersecurity. So I'm interested in seeing it from that side versus our pool that we are in. We seem to be finding ways to mitigate some of the costs with our Joint Powers Insurance Authority, and seeing the costs associated with SBCTA's insurance, it really does show that we are, we're in a good pool. So we had a joint subcommittee unanimously approving a development of a formal disabled veterans program for future consideration by the board. In other words, they're going to come back to the board and ask us to look at a program that would facilitate access to the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Express Lanes through San Bernardino County. So it'll be interesting to see what they do to support disabled veterans using the express lanes. We also released an invitation for bids for the I-10 Alabama Street Interchange. So those of you that travel to Redlands and you use the Alabama Interchange, construction will begin sometime in the not-too-distant future. So you want to prepare your alternate routes at this time. routes at this time. We also authorized the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority staff to release a call for projects for bicycle and pedestrian facilities with Transportation Development Act Article III. So the funding is under new guidelines, but they have over $3 million available for reward, selected projects. We'll, we'll look at a price tag of $672,817 as a contingency to the $3 million. And then emergency communications nurse system update. We were given an update on the system that is currently being piloted, that is a, that is a way for our 911 calls to be, to be prioritized. And they'll have nurse communications with a caller to ensure that they truly do need an ambulance to show up before they send one rolling. They'll, they'll find out who exactly needs to be sent to that call, and sometimes they'll facilitate a trip to a doctor's office or an emergency room, I mean, excuse me, an urgent care instead of the emergency room, freeing up the emergency room. So we received a preliminary report, and we encouraged and approved for them to continue on to the finalization of the scope of work. And so that is my report. We will move on to city manager communications.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager's update on June 8th, 2021. So we are going to be reopening this Grand Terrace Senior Center on June 14th, 2021. Some of the precautions that we're taking, we're having a soft opening and we're limiting the space, and we're encouraging people to call to get a reservation. The center is producing a newsletter outlining what's going to be happening at the facility. The facility this week is being cleaned and sanitized, and masks are going to be required along with other requirements at the facility. So we encourage all seniors to call on the senior center at 909-824-1491 and receive a reservation. In addition to that, the coordinator is going to be sending out a newsletter this week to all the seniors, inviting them back on a limited basis. This is a two-week trial, and then we'll, we'll reconvene for two weeks, and then we'll open up the, the center for full-time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. So at this time, we will recess to closed session. We have two items to consider. First is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Adrian Guerra, City Attorney, Colin Tanner, Deputy City Attorney. Employee organization is Teamsters Local 1932, and unrepresented employees, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Clerk, Director of Public Works, Director of Planning and Development Services, Management Analyst to positions, and Principal Accountant, Assistant Planner. And the second item is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, case name Sunny Days LLC versus City of Grand Terrace, case number CIV SB 2107692. For those of you that will not be waiting for us, after we come from closed session, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. And if you want to come and join us for budget deliberations, we will be doing that on June 15th. So at this time, we are in recess to closed session.
One more time.
Okay, we will reconvene to open session. City council met and closed session to review two items. Conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. No reportable actions on that item. We did give direction to staff. Item number two is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. Again, no reportable actions, and we gave direction to staff. So we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you all. We are adjourned.